...run things flawlessly. So I hope, I hope everyone finds this an enjoyable and informative evening. Good evening, everybody. We're behind schedule already. We have, we invited and had RSVPs from nine candidates for the at-large council seat. Hopefully, we'll have seven here in a minute now. One we know of, Brian Hart, is going to be delayed. He is a ANC Commission Chair who has a competing meeting and he has to be there for a certain period of time, but he will be joining us later. The other candidate we had expected, unfortunately, called me today and advised that she had conflicts and would not be able to be here, and that's Anita Barnes. So we will have not nine, but eight candidates for this evening's forum. Just a few brief comments. I think you all know, or if you don't, you will now, we try to run a very professional event. This is not an occasion for politicking, campaigning, whatever. It's an opportunity to hear from the people who may well be filling a couple of seats on our council, and when you think about it, that's a big deal. Two seats on a 13-member council. So we know we will have your cooperation, and we will have a very professional meeting. Try to hold your applause after, until after this is over. It just takes up some more time that we need desperately to get through the questions. We hope to have time at the end of the meeting for some Q and A. There are index cards at the back of the room, just as, to the left as you go out. If you have a question you want to ask, fill out the card. Please make it legible, of course, and please try to make it as short as possible. And as I say, I hope we will have the time to do that. Couple of things to remember. One is to please turn off your cell phones or other devices that may interfere with the candidates' presentations. And I guess simply, I will remind people that, you know, there are two positions that are being voted on. One, this fall in this election, and doubling the importance, really, of it for all of us. We're going to begin by allowing each of the candidates to make an opening statement. Will be just one minute long, and we'll begin with Eric Jones. Before you start, let me just, what I'm hoping for in these opening statements is that candidates will focus on their backgrounds and qualifications and not policy issues. Okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric J. Jones. I am a native Washingtonian, born and raised in Washington, DC, have lived in Ward 5 my entire life, family originally from River Terrace, have an undergraduate degree in marketing from Morehouse College, Masters of Science in Finance, and for the last seven years, I have had the honor of doing government affairs here in the city, working with the city council and with the last two mayors and last three city councils, working on policy and less than issues here in the city. Thank you.
And next, Mr. Purrier.
Yes, good evening. My name is Eugene Purrier. I'm a resident of Ward 8. For the time I've been living here in Washington, DC, I think we've seen a lot of growth and not a lot of development, and I've pretty much spent all my time here working for those who got the short end of that stick. I've been the co-founder of the Jobs Not Jails Coalition, working with our returning citizens and fighting discrimination. I've been a member of the Peacebreakers Not Peacemakers Not Peacebreakers Movement. We're working with communities east of the river to stop violence. I've working currently, right now, with the several tenant associations, helping them fight against displacement. I've worked in schools to help keep people's PEPCo rates stay low. Ultimately, all I've really done for my time in the District of Columbia is try to make sure that people have an equitable chance. I've been able to interact with the government at multiple different levels, and I've seen its dysfunction, its aloofness, and quite frankly, its inadequacy for many of those who are lowest on the totem pole, and I want, looking to bring that experience and that desire and drive to the council.
Thank you. Alyssa Silverman.
Terrific. Good evening. I'm Alyssa Silverman, and I'm running for this seat because I want to bring social justice to the council. I think this is an election not just about where you stand on the issues, but where you've stood. I've stood with many of you when the Housing Production Trust Fund was cut, and I worked with many of you to restore that money with my work with the DC Fiscal Policy Institute. Last year, I came before you and said, "I think we need paid sick days for restaurant workers," so that when someone who works for a restaurant gets sick or their child gets sick, they can take a day off without repercussions. I stood with you then, we got it passed, a higher minimum wage. I stood with many of you because I feel in our city, if you work full-time, you shouldn't live in poverty, and we got it done. Thank you.
Courtney Snowden.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Snowden. I'm a sixth-generation Washingtonian. I grew up in Shepherd Park and made the choice to move over to east of the river in Ward 7 in an economically depressed community called Deanwood. I am the mother of the most perfect five-year-old, Malik, who, who I want DC to be better for. I grew up in an amazing city. I went to amazing public schools, and I want my baby to have exactly the same thing, but I want yours to have it as well. So I'm running for DC Council to do just that, to ensure that we improve public education, to ensure that economic development happens with us and not to us, and importantly, to ensure that job training programs actually do what they're supposed to do, and that is put people in jobs that pay enough for them to live in this wonderful city. So I'm honored to be here with you tonight. I'm honored to participate in this debate with everyone up here and with you as well. And what I want you to walk away remembering is, above everything, I am a mother first.
Robert White.
Good evening. I hope there's some actual undecided voters here. For those who don't know, I'm Robert White. My, my personal background is one of a native Washingtonian, having grown up in this city in a working-class family, and that is a personal experience and a passion that I bring to everything I do in this city. Professionally, I'm an attorney, and I worked for Congresswoman Norton for many years as her legislative counsel, addressing all kinds of public policy issues that face our city day in and day out. So I feel very ready to join the council and hit the ground running, and I filter everything through my family, so you can rest assured that you have a champion on the council.
Mr. Pitts.
Thank you. Thank you for having us and welcome to all the folks who are running and showing a commitment. My name is Colin Pitts. I'm a labor organizer. I'm a small business owner. More importantly, as Courtney said, yeah, I'm a family man. I've got two young kids. My wife is sitting right here in the audience. I'm running for DC because I want to make this city better for everyone. As this city grows and prospers, I want to ensure that we all grow and prosper with it. I have invested in this city because this is my community. I've invested in this city when I worked in the, in the DC jails, trying to improve public health care. I've invested in this city when I've worked in the schools to reduce teenage pregnancy. I've invested in this city when, as right now, I'm serving on the executive board of the DC Health Exchange and helped construct the laws here, that now 50,000 people have health care who wouldn't have had it before. I've invested in this city because I love this city.
And Mr. Hagler, your opening statement, one minute, your background and your qualifications.
Well, good evening. I'm Graylon Hagler. I've been the pastor of Plymouth Congregational United Church of Christ here in Washington, DC since 1992, so 23 years of history, but not only history of pastoring in a community, but history in terms of organizing in the community. You can look across the street from the church where we took on the Exxon Corporation in 1993, who was trying to build a super gas station, and instead, we fought them to a standstill, and today, there's 69 units of subsidized senior housing on that corner instead of a super gas station, which what was Exxon wanted. Also, in terms of the history, when we look around Washington, DC today, we do not see payday lenders. We do not see payday lenders because we took them on and fought them in the streets to make them toxic. They were charging people 3,000% interest, 1,000% interest. They were ripping money out of the community, and people were not paying attention. And every time the city council turned around, they would exempt the payday lenders from anti-predatory lending legislation. That's what I'm running for, is to stop the pay-to-pay culture that has gripped the Wilson Building and to demand that there's accountability and that citizens of the District of Columbia are heard and respected and not just lobbyists and business interests.
Okay. When Brian Hart arrives, we promise that we'll allow him to have a big opening state as well, statement as well. But I want to go ahead and get started on the questions. Some of these are going to be pretty conventional, but I hope you're all feeling energetic because you've got some that are somewhat different, and I hope they'll be fun. Let me start with a conventional one first, not the content, of course, but just in the style, and I'll call on you by name to, to respond. I've mixed it all up, so don't expect it to be in any particular order. Even under the new campaign finance law, by giving once from their personal funds and then again from corporate funds, business owners are subject to contribution limits that are double the limits that apply to individuals. Do you think anything should be done about this? Are you accepting corporate contributions to your campaign? One minute for each candidate, beginning with Mr. Pitts.
Thank you very much for that question. Well, truth be told here, I am a small business owner. I have taken donations from other small business owners like myself, hard-working restaurateurs, retail workers, retail people. I think this question is more just about getting kind of corporate money out. It's about what are we going to do about our, one, about our system, and two, about really educating the electorate. I've worked across this country on civil rights and voting rights issues, so I know how important an engaged and educated electorate is. If we really want reform, and that's what people want, they want money out because they want transparency, then we need to move to a New York-style, public finance election. That's the simple reason to do it, where you get a six-to-one match, and we're funding candidates. Worked in New York for de Blasio, that is why de Blasio is mayor, and it can work here in DC. But beyond getting money, the fear of having corporate money out of elections, we need to educate the electorate so they know who's taking money from who and who's engaged.
Okay. Next, Mr. White.
Yes, so, you know, I think what, what we all agree, and I think our common goal has to be, is that there is no substitute for electing people to the council with integrity. That has to be our overarching goal. I strongly support a public, public financing for campaigns. It's something I've vocally supported here in my campaign. Yeah, I think that the step that the council took recently in their recent campaign finance legislation went a very long way to closing loopholes that had been open for, for a long time. What everybody in DC, I think, wants to see is an equal voice for, for people across the city, and that has to be our shared goal. I do accept donations from, from businesses. Actually, some of our first donations were from good friends of mine who gave from their businesses because that's where they could afford to give from, and we're talking about 30, 50, $100 donations, which really is the foundation of our campaign. What we want to address is outsized influence, and on the council, that would be one of my number-one priorities.
Ms. Jordan.
So I think probably the absolute worst part of running for office is having to raise money, and I think a public financing model that gives the people a voice would be absolutely wonderful. I spend a significant amount of time on the campaign trail, talking to voters who are concerned that because they don't have $1,000 to give me, that when I'm on the council, I won't listen to them. So I think the piece about transparency, integrity, and accountability is, of course, of utmost importance, one. The law that the council passed, I think Robert is right, that it did go a long way, but we can go even further. And I think we have to have a clear sense of what interests are donating when they do donate and what they get from it. So there needs to be some tracking of how legislation is impacted and where their donations have, how their donations have impacted votes on the council. But I think what's critically important in thinking about a public and, I think all of us actually would agree, that we have limited interest in spending our time raising money to communicate with voters. We want to actually spend our time communicating with voters. So I, I think a New York model or a Connecticut model, both would work incredibly well.
Ms. Silverman.
Thank you, Jerry. So I agree with Courtney. I think we can go further, and my campaign does go further. Folks, we've heard the window dressing of reform. I not only talk the talk about reform, I walk the walk. No, I don't take corporate contributions because it's about transparency, folks. LLCs, we don't know who these people are, and they abuse and exceed, some people, some bad actors, abuse and exceed our, our individual contribution limits, and that buys access and influence in our system. It's time for that to end. I believe in banning corporate contributions. Many of you work with me on Initiative 70 to do that. We fell short. I think we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard. It's time for the pay-to-play culture to end. I don't take corporate contributions, and that's why. I walk the walk of campaign finance reform.
Ms. Purrier.
Yes, well, thank you, Jerry. I also don't take corporate donations, and I think corporate donations should be banned in our political system. I also agree we should have public financing, but I think we have to be a little bit more honest here. I mean, first of all, you know, you cannot get from an LLC, but you can bundle for 20 of your friends and still raise $20,000 for someone and have undue influence, because there's always going to be some form of loophole, as long as there's haves and there's have-nots, and there are individual contributions, which, you know, the Supreme Court says there has to be. So I think we have to look very carefully. I mean, it's not public housing residents who are flooding our campaign system with cash and making sure that we have all these corrupt decisions and no one can get a meeting but a lobbyist. It's big corporations. And so I think if what we really want is integrity and clean elections and people who are going to support an equitable government, we also have to look at those who cast a skeptical eye towards those who do the corrupting, towards those who are looking to influ- influence the system unduly, and I think that's equally as important as anything you do from a legal perspective, but quite certainly, we do need publicly financed elections.
Ms. Jones.
Thank you for the question. First off, I think it's very hypocritical for most of the folks at the table to sit here and talk about transparency. The only person at the table who has not accepted money from a corporation or lobbyist or called and asked for one is Mr. Purrier. Everyone else at the table has. So for us to talk about transparency and honesty is a joke. Yes, I accept the corporate contributions. The fact of the matter is, we want to end the pay-for-play culture, let's take the carrot away. Our council has never voted against a single contract that has come before them since they've had Home Rule. If we want to end pay-for-play, remove the ability of the council to vote on contracts because they don't vote against them. They take the money from their friends, and then they vote for contracts. If you remove the ability and create a real procurement process, we won't have the ability to bribe council members, and that's what the real issue is. Funny enough, everyone talks about lobbyists. There's never been a lobbyist indicted for campaign corruption in this city, but there've been politicians who take from small businesses, medium-sized businesses, individuals who are lobbyists who get personal contributions. Here, here's where the corruption has come from, but no one wants to talk about the real issue. They want to give these sexy statements that sound good but are unrealistic.
Mr. Hagler.
One of the things is that people are engaged in a lot of slogans and a lot of cliches. You know, the, the reality is, is that there's somebody in my neighborhood who runs a business, been in that business for 45 years, been robbed 15 times. They've been robbed 15 times, they live in the community, they have a stake in the community, they've been in the community forever. They're a corporation. They should have a say in that community since they have decided not to go anywhere. They were there during the crack epidemic, they were there when things got good, they decided to remain there because they have an investment in the community. How dare we say that somehow they should be disenfranchised? Now, I believe, yes, that we need to have reform in terms of campaign financing. My, my proposal is, tell everybody they can give whatever they want. They can give as much as they want. Put it into a common pool, though, and when everybody gets on the ballot, divide that money equally and no new money come into the race. The what it is will be what it is.
Okay. I want to introduce you to one of the most important members of our team, Mr. John Zatoli, who you'll see up in front. He is the timekeeper for tonight and will help us try to get through all of this, so thank you, John. Okay, now onto the, the fun. I have arbitrarily assigned members of this panel to teams.
That's fun.
We have Team A, and Team A is going to be consisting of Mr. Jones, Ms. Silverman, and Mr. White. I'm going to ask a question. Each of you will answer the question. For this particular one, you'll have two minutes. Then the rest of the panel will each have a minute to say what you didn't say that you should have said or what you said wrong or whatever. Try to keep it to the important things and not the nitpicky things, of course. And then, after that's all over, we'll give the three team members 30 seconds each to what about what was said about their, their presentations. Okay, so let's begin with Mr. Jones. Here's the question. "The DC Council has passed several laws to improve wages, sick leave benefits, and protection against discrimination for workers in recent years. What would you do to ensure that these laws are effectively implemented, and what other laws would you support to further advance workers' rights?" So it's two parts. Implementation, implementation of what's been passed, what additionally do we need?
First off, let's look at what's been passed, and a great example would be the Wage Theft Bill. One of the problems in implementing laws in our city is, we have national organizations that don't have a local stake in our city pushing policy issues. When you have that situation happen, you don't exactly address the issues before DC. If you look at the Wage Theft Bill, there were 37 complaints of wage theft that were quoted before the council. All of them took place among two companies. What we did not do is bring in the rest of the companies or businesses within the city and talk about the issue. One of the things I believe is vitally important is, we have all members at the table when we have a discussion. That's how we make sure it's implemented. We create legislation that everyone can buy in on, and we don't have one side pitting against another. As far as legislation that I will look at passing, first of all, let's look at real wage issues. One of the problems we've had with the several different discussions about the living wage and minimum wage is, we carve out, we carve out different groups of individuals. If we're going to have a discussion, I want to start with including everyone, not excluding small businesses or excluding CVS or excluding McDonald's, or we're going to include Walmart because they're not union, but we're not going to include Safeway or Giant because they signed a union contract. That's not realistic. It pits one side against another, and it only gives some folks the ability to do good work. I want to look at making sure loopholes are closed and introduce legislation that includes everybody and everyone it feels well about. That's why we don't see things implemented, because when we make these caveats, we go back to the rule-making process six months to a year later, and those who have their carve-outs make rules that are unrealistic and can't be followed. That's why sick and safe took three years to implement instead of being implemented right away, because we had so many carve-outs and loopholes in it that it had to be thrown, thrown away almost before they could start over implementing. That's part of the problem.
Ms. Silverman.
So we're answering the same question, Jerry?
Sorry?
That we're answering the same question?
Same question.
Okay, great. Okay, I was unsure what Team A's role was. So, so folks, I'm labeled the wonk and the nerd and just lop-on a few other words of those themes, but I think that oversight is not just a good government thing. It's about saving people's lives, helping people earn a living, and, and I'm running on the council to do that oversight and implementation. And I am someone who testifies every year about the Department of Employment Services, which is charged with implementing and enforcing our wage and hour laws. And here's what I've noticed. A, we don't fund it properly. B, the folks who work for that office don't know what their job is because there aren't standard operating procedures in our Department of Employment Services. C, we need to implement these laws better and, and enforce them and oversee them, and that's what I'm going to do on the council. I'm going to, using, you know, my power on the council, I'm, during the budget process, I'm going to be asking the director of the Employment, Department of Employment Services, "Do you have the adequate staff that's needed to enforce wage discrimination law, wage theft, as well as the minimum wage and paid sick days? How are you doing it?" I'm going to ask for data about that. You know, I know this is all unsexy, and this is why I'm labeled the wonk, but I think this is a key role that the council plays, doing the, the careful oversight, asking the key questions, going back to make sure, sure things are implemented, and making sure that our laws work properly. That's what I would do.
Mr. White, same question.
Thank you. I, I, I think, you know, the proper role of the council is, you know, unfortunately, one, one thing that we've seen too much of in this city is folks getting city funds, being bad actors and continuing to, to get city funds, and that's something that, that we have to put an end to. This is a matter of accountability. You know, the council does have a, a strong role, a, a strong oversight role, to make sure that we are enforcing the laws that, that we put in place, but what we cannot continue to have are people taking advantage of, of the city, take people taking advantage of, of residents. So the arm of the council is going to be in its oversight role with me, more similar to, to how, how Congress exercises its oversight role. What you're going to see is a mini-series of waste, fraud, and abuse hearings. That's something that I worked on for many years under Congresswoman Norton, something that I think we need to do better job of on the council. We don't just bring agencies in when it's time to go over budgets, we have to bring them in periodically to make sure they are enforcing, and I think one of the biggest enforcement problems with our, with our wage and sick leave issues is that DOES, DOES is not funded to have an enforcement arm, which is something that we have to correct.
Okay. Now, before I unleash the tack, the attack dogs, just one, one option you don't have to take all the time. And furthermore, if you think that everything's been said that needs to be said, say so. We can, we can use the extra time. I'm not expecting to get very far, but, but I better say it. Okay. Ms. Snowden.
Oh, I didn't think you were going to come to me first. Well, thank you, Jerry. So I, I actually agree with a good amount of what has been said. I think two major issues exist for this council in terms of fixing the problems around wages and paid sick leave and all of those fund policies that really impact people who live in the community and which I live the most, because so few, so many in my community in Ward 7 and east of the river are un- and underemployed and don't have jobs that provide the level of support paid in terms of wages, doesn't, don't have paid sick leave and are hourly jobs, so I'm in a community where the vast majority of people are not exactly quite like me. And so here's what I think needs to happen. One, we need to ensure that DOES does have an enforcement arm, but importantly, we need to reorganize DOES from top to bottom to focus significantly on making sure that we're training people appropriately for jobs that actually pay a living wage, and at this point, DOES is not doing that, and we need to step that up. But I think the biggest piece, and I agree with my colleagues up here, is that the council has done a pretty terrible job on oversight. That was hard.
Ms. Purrier.
Yes. Well, you know, I think the very fact that we're all sitting here talking about what all the problems are assigned, that really is not really the issue that the council doesn't have enough oversight, it's that the council doesn't want to do anything about it. They know that they need to fund things, they know that they need to fund these things, they just choose not to. But I have to be 100% honest with you, I think we need to change the entire paradigm of how we enforce these things. I mean, the reality is, is that people who are living in poverty, you know, you could be dealing with a wage and hour complaint at the same time your landlord's trying to kick you out, and at the same time, you're still trying to find a job, but you're getting discriminated against because you're a returning citizen. What we need in DC, which is allegedly a human rights city, is a Department of Human Rights that ends the balkanization between the Office of the Tenant Advocate and the Office of the People's Council and all these other enforcement arms, brings them under one roof and has an elected public advocate who is the head of that department, who will go like a junkyard dog after all these people who are out here trying to steal people's wages, keep them from getting employed, and everything else that they're doing. And I don't think there's any other way we're going to do it, as long as it's separated over 18 different offices, because it's really the same people who have all the problems.
Ms. Pitts.
Thanks. You know, I mean, it's hard to follow Eugene sometimes. You know, you know, I mean, we've said it here, it's enforcement, accountability, and actually putting teeth in that, as Eugene said, but it's not only about, you know, kind of the punishment side, it's about what are we going to promote? I hear anyone here talking about promoting good businesses that treat their workers right. What does the city do about promoting businesses that treat their workers right? And secondly, what does the city do about, particularly with unpublic money, about punishing or not giving funds to those businesses that don't treat, you treat their workers right? Part of city government is creating an environment for success. Success for businesses, success for people, success for the city.
Mr. Hagler.
Every corporate entity in the city understands that they can sign any document promising anything because no one is ever going to hold them accountable for whatever they sign. So First Source, for example, is never, ever enforced, and that has a very negative impact. When you look at also what takes place in the city, I'll give you a prime example. We're all marching around what's went on in Ferguson, Missouri, because the one is the police department had no relationship with the community. When you look at the DC, the Metropolitan Police Department in DC, you realize the majority of them live outside the city, and they have closed out, they have closed out our young people from applying to be a member of the MPD by saying that you have to have 60 hours of college credit. have sixty hours of college credit in order to apply. You can go to Iran and Afghanistan and Iraq and wish your life for your country, but you can't apply for the M.P.D. to serve your community. That's a travesty, that's a shame. We need to enforce things all around and open the door so that our people who are raised and graduate from our high schools can truly serve the communities that they were raised at.
I gather Mr. Hart has not arrived yet, so let's move on to the next question, and this is going to be...
Do you have thirty seconds of rebuttal?
I'm sorry?
You promised a thirty-second rebuttal to Group A.
Okay, tell me again.
You promised a thirty-second rebuttal to Group A.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I moved too quickly. All right, the team members have thirty seconds now to go back at what was said about that position. Okay.
Well, really quickly, I heard a lot talk about DOES. Most folks don't realize that DOES is actually well-funded. The problem is not funding in DOES. The problem is accountability in DOES, and it's actually having individuals on our council who understand workforce development, who understand job placement. And by the way, Reverend Hagler, there's been twenty-seven cases of folks being fined and penalized for First Source by DOES. It's happened over the last three years. So there is enforcement. Unfortunately, we don't talk about it enough because we don't actually have folks in place who understand what they're doing with the council, who actually come from the industries that are being impacted. And funny enough, how can we have a council that talks about punishing businesses when our own government doesn't meet the rules and regulations that they pass on a regular basis?
Ms. Silverman.
In the interest of time, Jerry, I'll let my prior statement stand.
Thank you. And Ms. White.
Thank you. No, just a small point of clarification. I think Mr. Perier's point was apt, but we do have an office on human rights.
An office, not a department, which is also understaffed and doesn't have enough people there, which is why it's going to have a negative effect in terms of the returning citizen.
Okay. Now, moving on to the next question, calling up Team B, which will consist of Mr. Pitts, Mr. Perier, and Ms. Snowden. You'll have two minutes each to address this very simple question. Is D.C.'s rent control system working? If not, what do you think needs to be done? I think here to improve that, I should say to make it work. And...
Is D.C.'s making it work?
Mr. Pitts, you're first on this. Okay. Right?
No, you're first.
Oh, sorry. That's kind of hard to hear.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Look, as everyone laughed at this question, I think we kind of know this. We're seeing in D.C. what people experience around San Francisco. You know, a housing crisis where working families, not even the poor, but working families can't stay in their apartments, can't stay in the city limits. Whether we're talking about fully funding the housing trusts, whether we're talking about holding developers accountable for building affordable housing in their units, whether we're talking about the city and how they enforce these things, that is what we're talking about here. You know, moving forward as a city, I think we need to address a couple of things here. I think, one, we need to build more affordable housing, you know, and not get away the housing as we allow developers to do when, you know, I think the contracts are coming up, mostly the twenty-year contract's coming up, and they want to get away the housing, move it to certain different wards or certain locations. We can't let that happen. Second, we need to figure out ways that we're looking at working families and making sure they stay, you know, in their homes, they're renting, and have the ability, as we talked about, it's not just about renting housing, it's about jobs and good-paying jobs, because we want to create those ladders of success, so that someone can start here and move up here in terms of economics, but also someone can start renting an apartment, hopefully they can buy maybe a condo, maybe they can then buy a house, maybe buy a bigger house when they have a family. That's what the city government should be focusing on, is how do we move that ladder of success for individuals within this city?
Ms. Perier.
Yes, well, I think the rent control law certainly, not only is it not working, it's really a fig leaf. I mean, we have to look at a number of different problems. I mean, first and foremost, it only covers buildings built in 1976 or before, which leaves out a huge amount of housing stock. Second, the way it's calculated, which is CPI plus two percent, if you have that CPI plus two percent over twenty years, that's going to triple the rents. So it doesn't actually really control the rents. So what's the point of having a rent control law if it doesn't really actually control affordability? Just CPI in twenty years would double the rents. And so you see what the significance is, it's not really rent control. And then finally, you have this issue where landlords are guaranteed a twelve percent return and the so-called hardship petition, which is, it's one of the most absurd things I've ever seen. I mean, if you have a money manager walk into his office tomorrow and ask him for a twelve percent return every year and watch him laugh you right back out of the office. I mean, quite frankly, we don't have a rent control law, we have a keep landlords rich law. What we need in D.C. is a real rent control law that covers every single unit, and that takes into account that cost of living is dynamic, and it needs to be set by fiat over a certain period of time, so we make sure that rent is controlled in a way that maintains our affordability in a way that is actually germane to what the actual rise in the cost of living is, so that our housing stock doesn't continue to get depleted. Because listen, when we lost that fifty percent of affordable housing in ten years in D.C., renters' incomes stayed exactly the same. So rents can triple, I guarantee you working people's incomes aren't going to triple, unless we raise the minimum wage.
Okay, Ms. Snowden.
Yes, no. I think that's absolutely right. Look, I think our rent control laws are nonexistent, right? It's actually 1975, not 1976, that are subject to rent control restrictions. And how many new buildings have you seen all over this city? So absolutely, I think we need to adjust what our incredibly outdated rent control laws. But I think the issue around affordable housing is an important one, because so many people are being pushed out of the city in each and every single ward. And this is an issue that, again, I see all too often. I think many of us would love to live in the wonderfully new-developed neighborhoods that have retail and grocery stores and coffee shops and restaurants everywhere, and many of us are being pushed out, further and further out into the city where development has not taken hold, where things haven't happened in a way that meets the needs of the community. And I think that's a piece we need to talk about. But beyond talking just about affordable housing, which I agree with completely up here, what has been said up here, is we really need to talk about wages and job training and getting people into jobs that will allow them to pay rents. Here's the unfortunate reality, folks. Rent is going to continue to go up in this city. Housing prices are going to continue to go up. Now, there are things that we can do. We can put more money in the housing trust fund, we can provide more rent support to renters, we can create incentives for our first responders to move into the city so that they live here, and teachers to live in the city, because I think that's a critically important piece that helps build community. But I think importantly, what we really have to focus on is figuring out how we get people in solidly good jobs that help them pay to live in this city. And I think an additional important piece is that we have to stop talking about affordable housing like it's happening. I remember when Clifton Terrace was purchased for, how much? Does anyone remember? Eleven dollars. And when I wanted to buy a condo in Clifton Terrace, the minimum low-income requirement, I think, was around sixty-five thousand dollars. While I was a Hill staffer, I made twenty-two thousand dollars a year, which, if you don't know, is eleven one-hundred-dollar bills a month.
Okay. Mr. Hagler, what can you take issue with, add to, or whatever?
Well, we all agree that rent control is not working. It slanted always towards the landlord. And in fact, it's typical, because just about every other legislative act or piece or policy that has been created in D.C., there's always been a loophole that's been designed in it so that you do not hold the entities entirely accountable, because just like you can put together a hardship petition or a capital improvement petition, and you can get all around the so-called regulations of rent control. But I want to say that we need to, yes, produce affordable housing, but we also need to keep public housing public. We need to expand it, we need to get the profiteers out of it. We should be ashamed of ourselves, we should be ashamed of ourselves when we weep over a little so-rud, ending up missing, out of a shelter, when in fact we got nearly five hundred units of vacant housing, vacant housing that could be housing families. So we're playing games when we talk all of this stuff around affordable housing and what infrastructure's in place. And sisters and brothers, the thing that I understand is I want to go to the council, I want to go to the council because I don't want to fit in. I don't want to fit in with the structure, the culture that has existed there. I want to call people out and make the difference on behalf of the citizens of Washington, D.C.
Ms. Silverman.
So I've been taking it at some events to say I'm running the For Real campaign. I'm for real. The housing crisis is real, we need to declare we're in affordable housing, in a housing crisis. Here's what I'm going to do as your council member. You know, number one, rent control isn't the issue because affordable rental housing is disappearing in our city, and we can see it through the numbers. You can see it driving up Georgia Avenue. There being, those old buildings that were under rent control are being converted to condo. They're no longer rental houses. First, I think we need to strengthen the Office of the Tenant Advocate to let people know their rights as renters. So when a building is purchased, they know their rights, that they have first right to purchase. Just I'll go through the list. A hundred million dollars guarantee every year in the Housing Production Trust Fund so we can build more housing. I want to put more money into local rent supplement. I want to put more money into rental assistance. That's what the council can do, but you need a laser focus, and you need to know the programs. I've spent the last five years working on these programs. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Well, I think we all know the program's not working, but there's some issues we're not talking about. The fact of the matter is, we all know that we've promised, we're supposed to be putting a hundred million a year into affordable housing. First of all, we need to stop using the word affordable housing and say affordable and workforce housing, because they're two different things. Secondly, it's a little-known fact that most folks don't talk about. The city can't find developers to actually build affordable housing with the money they're offering, because developers don't want to deal with the city. We need to change the climate of how our government works. And third, we need to stop talking about giving folks affordable housing without giving them the education opportunities, as Mr. Pitts said, to improve their sales. Because no matter how many affordable housing units you build, if we're not improving the folks who need to make more money to be able to afford the standout city, they're still going to end up being pushed out long-term. The fact of the matter is, if you look at the stats, all of these new glorious luxury apartments that are coming along, they're seventy, eighty, ninety percent leased. So unfortunately, somebody's actually in those homes. And every time somebody new comes in making a lot of money, that AMI creeps up. So affordable housing costs creeps up. So unless we start educating and giving our folks the opportunities to make more money and be productive members of our society, they're still going to be priced out, no matter how much money we put into affordable housing.
Ms. White. Thank you. So I mentioned earlier I'm a native Washingtonian, I'm a fifth generation, but, you know, unfortunately, I'm one of the only folks in my family still left in the district because of the cost of housing for working-class people. It's out of control, we all know it's an issue, but identifying the issue, I think, is not good enough. We really have to start identifying solutions to these issues. We have some glaring solutions looking us in the face, but we have to take urgent action. One of the things I've called on is that we need to invest a billion dollars into affordable and workforce housing over the next five years. What we need to do with that money is focus on preservation, because there's no way that we can build enough housing to keep up with the need, but we can preserve a lot more than we would ever be able to build. So when an apartment building goes in the market, it's not just the tenants that have the ability to purchase the building, the district has the opportunity to purchase the building under the District Opportunity to Purchase Act. When the district exercises that opportunity, purchases the building, puts a covenant on rents to limit the rents in perpetuity, then we can keep more affordable housing than we could ever create.
Now, members of the team, Pitts, Perier, and Snowden, any of you wish to add anything?
Yes.
Yes.
That sounds like a great law from Pitts.
Oh, ladies first, thank you so much. So just two things I want to add. One, I think it's really critically important that we start to hold developers accountable, right? Too many of these deals we strike allow developers to build affordable housing. They say, "Let us put market-rate housing over here in the places where we can get market-rate prices." And oh, by the way, let's fix some affordable housing over in Ward Seven and Ward Eight. Now, we need more affordable housing in Ward Seven and Ward Eight, because our incomes are much, much lower than other parts of the city. But what we also don't need anymore of is affordable housing, right? That thing comes so fast, I just want you people to know how they're, it just comes so quickly.
Ms. Pitts.
So I just want to chime in, this one thing Robert said, you know, I think it's a good idea, but, you know, we're all fighting for the city to do as normal public services picking up the trash on time. I'm just a little bit concerned about investing so much in the city solving this issue by buying houses. Not saying the bad yet, but we've got to produce as a city. And a second thing, I just, you know, again, want to say, you know, we can't look at affordable housing in a box. We've got to improve the economy, the economic lock for people in the city. And Erica said it's about education, about creating jobs, they can rise in the ladder of success from minimum wage jobs to middle-income jobs to hopefully high-income jobs. You think about the Elton John song, you know, "I buy you a big house, we both can live." Everyone wants the American dream or the D.C. dream. And so we, as a government, should be helping that environment so they can buy the house they can both can live.
Ms. Perier, anything more?
I would just say quickly, I actually don't agree with one point Mr. Jones asserted, which is that developers don't want to build affordable housing in the district because they don't want to work with the city. I think it's not because they don't want to work with the city, they want to make the most amount of money that they possibly can. I mean, the whole thing is just a shakedown process where they go and say, "Well, we can't do this affordability," and then go to the city government and use it like it's an ATM machine to get some little bit of money to build their thing, and then put the tiniest little amount of affordable housing and say, "Oh, hey, look how great we are." I think it's not about developers, and we need this executive to finalize the rules for the District Opportunity to Purchase Act, so the district can start getting into the game and buying some of these low-income buildings like Mount Vernon Square over there in Columbus Gallery Place.
But Winston, one thing, you know, things that the city could do is kind of create the table, you know, creating from builders and labor. You know, the things we're seeing in New York where labor unions have decided, you know, to take less wages than they normally would to help build affordable housing, I think there are things that the city can do to kind of build those relationships.
Much like Montgomery County, which is partnering with the Housing Opportunities Commission to do just some of the things we're talking about, but rather than letting the city buy the property, they allow nonprofits who are stable enough and have the capacity to do it to do just that and create a ceiling for affordability. And I think that's something we should replicate in D.C.
These simple questions somehow get so complicated. Okay, another simple question. This time, we won't use a team approach, we'll just go down the line, as it were.
Thanks.
Understated. What do you see as the top issues concerning the Metropolitan Police Department's relations with the public? We're just giving one minute per candidate for this, starting with Ms. Silverman.
I think the biggest issue is community engagement. So a lot of, you probably don't know that I was a crime reporter for the Washington Post. I worked the night shift from 6:00 P.M. to 1:30 A.M., and I spent a lot of time covering, unfortunately, murders that got one inch in the paper, or one, I'm sorry, I mean reporter speak, one sentence in the paper. I think communication is the biggest issue. I think you always, no matter what meeting you go to, people want to see more cops on the street. I think we need to, number one, have better relationships. Ferguson's a perfect example. We need to have better community policing, which means that our officers are involved with you, and you feel comfortable talking to them. I think we also need to deploy our officers much better using data to really address the crime hotspots.
Ms. Snowden.
You just loved me today, Jerry, don't you? I love you back, so it's good. Look, I'm, again, we talked about this, look, my house has been broken into three times since 2011. I have cameras all around my house to prevent that from happening. I live in a community that has the best of what this city has to offer, but experiences some of the absolute worst of this city's crime. And the number of police officers on the east of the river is deplorable. It is deplorable. So a couple of things that we need to do, I think, immediately. One, I think we'd certainly need more police walking the street, building a relationship with community. So when crimes happen, police officers can get great information quickly, and actually will know the folks in the community, number one. Number two, I think it is true that we have to look at the data, but here's a problem with some of the data. Ward Seven and Ward Eight have some of the lowest 911 calls in the city and the highest amounts of crime. So if you follow the data, you will put more police officers in other parts of the city. Well, that actually doesn't make sense. So what I think is critically important, and I want to just say, that I think the So what I think is critically important, and I want to just say, that I think the police department does a hell of a job in keeping us safe, but there's more that they can do.
Mr. Hagler?
You can clap, it's okay.
Are you finished, Ellen?
Well, I think that one of the things that we have never understood very well, and not only here but all across the country, and that is what really community policing is. We continue to be deficient in that. We've been deficient in that all across the country. And it comes back to also the place in terms of your officers having a relationship with the community. In other words, that they live in the community, that they are a product of that community, that they also have the opportunity to serve the communities in which you were raised in. Like I said earlier, we deny that opportunity to our young folks. At one time, we talked to our young folks about serving their community, and then we have policies in place that deny them the ability to serve unless they go off to the military. And we need to always address that issue of the militarization of the police departments, not only in Washington DC, but across the country. Because there is this relationship, which is an unhealthy relationship, that prevents a police department from really being engaged in community policing.
Mr. Pitts?
You know, just chiming in with the good Reverend just said, you know, we can put as more cops on the streets, we can have them deployed in different areas, but as Reverend said, unless we demilitarize our police department, just take a look at their uniforms right now, the medicine uniforms, and give them sensitivity training, you know, we're going to continue to have problems, you know? I've been stopped on the street just because, I'm sure Eric and Eugene and Robert and Reverend Hager have experienced.
Courtney does too.
You know, and Courtney, no, just experienced walking down the street, fitting the profile, you know? I got pulled over with my wife one time doing that. So it's, again, unless we change the culture and the mindset of the police department, we can't, we cannot change their action, what they have with the general public and the general public's relationship with the police department.
Mr. White?
I don't think that the DC Police Department is overly militarized, given its unique jurisdiction in our country. I think that they do a great job. I think the rank-and-file officers in our city are tremendous. As president of my civic association in Brightwood Park, when I email my PSA lieutenant, Lieutenant Lamont, and ask him to come to a meeting because we've had a crime issue, he comes and he brings officers with him, which I tremendously appreciate. My problem is that when he shows up at the meeting and there's been a homicide in our neighborhood, they read the statistics and they say, things have gotten better. Well, unfortunately, you know, if you lived here in the 90s like I did, things will always be a little bit better than they used to be. So I think what we want to see, instead of a reliance on statistics, is a reality that our police department can adapt to changes and trends in crimes in our neighborhoods so that we feel a little safer.
Mr. Jones?
On Tuesday while canvassing, I stumbled upon Officer Atkins, who was the 2013 MPD Officer of the Year. I asked him why he won the award, and he talked to me about a community engagement initiative that he created up in the Second District where he's at. He also showed me how he created that same initiative over in 50 where he lives, over in Prieston 69. He's soon to be retired after serving 25 years in the force, and one of the things I asked him is, how is the morale in MPD? How can we get more community engagement to get more folks to think like you? Well, the first thing he brought up that we don't talk about enough is, our police officers haven't had a raise in seven years, which has been promised to them, which we must deliver to them because it's vitally important. How are you going to have folks who want to engage the community if they're stressed about making ends meet? We talk about affordable living, how can we get folks to live in our community if our police officers haven't had a raise in seven years? The cost of living has went up every year, but they can't afford to be part of the communities that they serve and protect because they can't afford to live here. Let's give them their raise, let's bring them back to the city, let's give them programs to help them get workforce housing in the city. I remember growing up in Brookland, and Officer Mike lived down the street. He kept it safe because he lived there. Let's bring that back.
Okay, and Mr. Purrier, you get the last word on this?
Yes, well, I mean, I think first and foremost, we can't police our way out of the problem of crime, so we have to always keep that in the forefront. But secondly, you know, you can't even really rely on the data because the MPD isn't keeping all the data. They don't record all their stops, they don't record every time they pull a gun like they're supposed to. And the reality is, it's not just the culture, and it's not just who it is, it's the tactics and the mentality that they have, the entire jump-out-boy phenomenon that's only east of the river, even though we know that west of the park has some of the highest marijuana usage of the entire country, not just DC. But they don't use jump-out-boys over there, which if you don't know, is a military-style thing where they just jump out of a car, they point a gun at you, and it has a huge constitutional issue because six guys jump out of their car, they point assault rifles at you, and they say, empty your pockets, empty your pockets. They've completely violated your constitutional rights, even though under a pretext, they say, oh, well, we actually got the thing, we actually were able to do it. Whether it's the marijuana issue, whether it's a broken light, whether it's something hanging in your window, we've also seen from what the ACLU has done in a positive way and what will come out in the hearing that's happening on October 9th about these issues, there's a massive amount of pretextual stops. And the whole reason they don't record all the data is because the MPD is trying to hide the fact they have a de facto stop-and-frisk program, they just call it marijuana odor, something wrong with your car. And they're only doing it in certain parts of the city, and I think that we need to look at that. It's a huge civil rights violation.
They don't just do it east of the river, come to Fifth District. They do it in Trinidad, Trucksden Circle, Bloomingdale, they do it in other parts of the city.
Well, it's even worse problem than I'm talking about then. I live in Ward Eight, so that's how I know, but that's the reality of it.
Okay, again, Mr. Hart is not here, so I'm going to modify my plans a little bit. You will be? Okay, well, I'm going to skip over this question and go to the next one, we'll come back to it because he's supposed to be here in just a couple of minutes. Again, this is one-minute question for everybody. What concerns do you have, if any, with the agreement the administration negotiated with the owner and developer to build a new soccer stadium in DC? Okay, what concerns do you have, if any, with the agreement the administration negotiated with the owner and developer to build a new soccer stadium in DC? Mr. White? I'm sorry, is there a question?
Well, I just wanted to, I'm just so ready to answer that one.
You'll get your chance.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Yes, my issue is what is still a significant lack of information. I think that, you know, we can't as a public make an informed decision on this without knowing the evaluation for the Reef Center, without having a better understanding of how transportation is going to work. I don't know if any of you have driven down Industry Southwest during rush hour, but it's already a traffic jam, so we don't know what we're going to do with that. The other thing, we can't proceed with an assumption that because you move workers from the Reef Center to Anacostia, that that is going to promote development in Anacostia. I think that we have to have some solid financial background information in order to make an informed decision.
Ms. Snowden?
Thank you. So, look, here's the deal. There are three things I want to say in one minute, Lord, here we go. One, this deal is incredibly complex, but here's what I know. The Reef Center, prime real estate, that should go out on the open market, and we should sell it for what it's worth. Number one. Number two, look, I'm not opposed to the soccer stadium, but this is what I'll say. We put $600 million into that area of the city to build Nationals Park. There was lots of challenges around it, it's turned out to be an okay investment, there's some challenges, but it's okay. We're talking about putting an additional $150 million in the same part of the city where we just invested. Does that make sense? Why are we not talking about leveraging dollars for, city dollars for development in Ward Seven and Ward Eight? Development can't happen organically. Why is that not the conversation? Number one. Number two, is that the best use of $150 million? What is the return on investment? Oh, I don't know, maybe you've heard of DC General, there's some major problems there. Maybe we could use some money for that. I don't know, it's just a thought. I did that in less than a minute.
And Ms. Silverman?
I agree with Courtney and Robert that the Reef Center, it seems like a giveaway. I mean, that is the most, 14th and U is the most valuable piece of land in our city right now. And this gets to bigger issues, which is, this is a public asset that we own, and it makes sense to put it, I think it makes sense to put it on the tax rolls, but we want to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck in this deal. I also have, but, you know, there are jobs, everyone talks about jobs here, there are jobs that are going to be created out of the soccer stadium. I'm not totally against it, I just want to make sure that we're getting the best value for taxpayer dollars, which means we're going to get good jobs out of the building and construction of the stadium, as well as the jobs that come afterward. And also, I see nothing about what's going to happen with this Anacostia Reef Center. What is the plan? How's it going to be built? Where's the money coming from? All the focus is on the soccer stadium, but there's no talk about where the money's going to come from to build the Reef Center in Ward Eight. Those are a few of my concerns.
Mr. Hagler? Reef Center?
We've had a pattern of always being lied to and not having deals transparent, namely, look at Nationals Park, right? That deal that went into place. No transparency there, whether we actually got a fair deal for that. When you look at it, it does not really, really benefit in terms of even its utilization of people from Washington DC, because people come from every place else in order to use that stadium. And then you come down and you talk about the Reef Center. My position is, is that things that are public need to remain public, and we need to find another use for it, but they need to remain public, and to exchange the Reef Center for a toxic waste dump where cars have been abandoned makes no sense on the surface, let alone when you look in the numbers, it's probably going to stink to high hell.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Well, let's be honest, we look at this soccer stadium proposal, it was a campaign ploy to try to get somebody who re-elected, who lost the race. Let's be brutally honest about it. It came out the year before the election, we had a backroom deal with a metropolitan Washington Council of AFL-CIO to ensure that all of the workers would come from union halls outside the city who are signatory to the agreement. We made a deal with developers who would only take a small percentage of the risk to make a lot of money. We then told the soccer team, we're going to give you $150 million, and then ensure that you don't have a loss on your contract. And to make things even worse, when the city government put out the contract, they left out half the information so we couldn't review it. This was a bad deal from the beginning, and it was all a campaign ploy to try to get somebody re-elected who's on their way out of office. So I'm against the entire deal. It all needs to be scrapped and blown up.
Mr. Pitts?
So I think I may be the only person up here who's actually testified at Bureau Bowser's hearing she did a couple of months ago. You know, let's just say, we've kind of heard it. The city has proven a track record of doing a poor job in investing in large development. So we need to, you know, the process needs to be transparent so people can take a look. Second, I think I'm the only one here who's going to be directly impacted by what's going to happen to Reef Center, both from a commercial standpoint and as a residential standpoint. Now, I may disagree with you, Courtney, about putting it out in the open market, because one of the things that's happened is the residents and the business owners in that on 14th Street and the New Street have not been involved in the process, and what they want to happen to the Reef Center has not been heard.
Mr. Purrier?
Yes, well, I'll say, I also testified along with Jerry Clark and Debbie Hanahan, Mr. Jones here, and several other people at the very first hearing that was held about the soccer stadium issue, so I've been out there as well. I'm opposed to the soccer stadium, not in the general sense, I think if DC United wants a stadium, they should pay for it and they should build it. Philosophically, I just think that there's too much of a culture in this country and in this city of people who have the money to build things, going to the city and demanding the money to build things, and then putting a gun to our head and saying, well, if you don't do it, if you don't give us this money, we're never going to do it. I mean, I don't look at that as development, I look at that as a terroristic attitude, and I don't negotiate with terrorists, I'll take that to the council. And, you know, further, and first and foremost, I also do want to pick up on one thing that Alyssa's saying, we have a lot of reporters here. I think it's very important that reporters look at this one property, 1350 Alabama Avenue Southeast, where there's currently a displacement effort going on right now to put up luxury office space as part of it, and we haven't heard anything about how they're going to build this Reef Center in Southeast. I think we need to look very closely at how these different pieces and these different deals that are working together. Please, look into this, 1350 Alabama Avenue Southeast, write about it.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to take a slight break from the routine and introduce our host guest tonight, Brian Hart. Brian, would you like to take a minute and introduce yourself, talk about your background and qualifications, and then we'll move on to more questions.
Absolutely. Let me just forget this. I was at an ANC Commission meeting, I'm the ANC Commissioner at Adams Morgan, and I'm Chair of the ABC and Public Safety Committee, and that's why I was running a little bit late tonight. We were dealing with some issues in our neighborhood with respect to car break-ins and vandalism, and also some violence activities on 18th Street. So I apologize for being late, but I thank you all for being here, and I thank DC for democracy for hosting this event, and I'm happy to be here with my fellow candidates. Thank you. You know, I'm running because I believe in justice and equal opportunity and transparency, and I believe there's a real lack of that in our city. And, you know, I've worked during law school and after law school, I campaigned for President Obama. Since then, I've worked very hard as a public interest attorney in the city, as a teacher and mentor at Blue and Anacostia High Schools, and also as an ANC Commissioner. I've seen firsthand those issues, and I'm going to fight very hard for those principles and those values if elected to the DC Council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to go back to the question we skipped over, which we needed you for. This is a concept that we're trying out tonight for the first time, which we have team members take the lead on a particular question, and then the other members of the panel get to critique the members of the team.
Self-infliction of wounds or something.
Indeed. So, we're going to, Team C, which should be three people, but since Ms. Barnes couldn't join, so it's just going to be two, Mr. Hagler and Mr. Hart. And you'll have each two minutes to address the following question, after which the rest of the panel will have a minute each to talk about what you've said or haven't said. The district has adopted a number of educational reforms in recent years, yet although the data shows some improvements in student performance, they seem on average to be fairly small. Is there something important missing from our reforms, or not yet kicks in? Are we even using the right student performance measures? Mr. Hagler?
Well, something is drastically wrong when we talk about educational reform in Washington DC, because the reality is, is that those who are high-income, those white students, they have excelled. Black students have generally only gone up by maybe two points or less. And in fact, what happens is when we always talk in the district about there's an improvement in the standardized testing, the reality is, we're averaging it out. And so what happened after the mayoral takeover was that basically, our white students and higher-income students shot up in terms of performance, while basically, low-income students and black students basically almost plateaued off. And in fact, if white students did not progress any further, and high-income students did not progress any further, and black students progressed at the same rate they're progressing right now, it would take 132 years for black students to catch up with white students in the city. That's not reform, that is basically building a pipeline to prison and failure for our young folks. And so when we talk about it, it's nothing but hype. The fact is, is that the administration has intimidated teachers and basically managed top-down the whole educational structure so that there's no creativity, they're basically teaching to the test. That's all that's going on, rather than teaching students how to solve problems and how to lead a productive and creative life. And we need to get back to that, because the reality is, leave no child behind is leaving a lot of children behind.
Okay, and Mr. White?
Yes, I think there certainly is something lacking, and to Reverend Hagler's point, when you have 90% of white students proficient in reading, and you only have 44% and 40% of Hispanics and African-Americans who are proficient in reading, there's a real problem there. And it shows that we're not educating our students properly across the entire city. And I would hone in on three things that I think that the DC government could do differently. One, I would ensure that the allocation of resources across all of the schools is more fair and done in a more reasonable and smart way. Sometimes it's just the loudest voices that are the ones that receive the resources from the DC government. That needs to be looked at closely, and it needs to be more transparent. I think, secondly, something that I've learned as an ANC Commissioner is you have to work closely with individual educators, principals, and teachers in each neighborhood to solve their specific problems. All schools are different, one might have a transportation issue, another might have, you know, a parking issue, another might have a lack of resources. So you have to work in the individual neighborhood with the specific schools. And the third thing I would say is, there is something wrong with the assessment system, there's too much of a focus simply on math and reading scores. We need to also take into account qualitative measures like peer-to-peer reviews, student surveys, what are the other measures that we're missing when we assess how our students are performing? How are they getting their health education, not just their reading and math? So I think all of these are very, very important. And the third, the fourth thing that I would say, which is an overarching issue, and before I run out of time here, is the balance that we have between our neighborhood schools and our charter schools. And this is very, very important. Charter schools are here to stay, they're educating over 40% of our students, but we need a fair playing field between charter schools and neighborhood schools. We understand it's a competition, we understand that it's providing great choice, but that playing field between those two systems needs to be fair and transparent. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Purrier, you get to lead the attack.
Well, you know, we've heard a lot about the disparities in the school system, but we haven't heard the one obvious word, which is that we have a segregated school system, we haven't heard the one obvious word, which is that we have a segregated school system, and that's the reality of what exists in Washington DC today and around the country. I think that what we have to do is, and I constantly hear this issue of we need to put more resources into the schools east of the river. You know, the Century Foundation, they did a study, they did a six-year study into this issue exactly, and they looked at schools that on the one hand were all low-income, that had more money pumped in, and schools that were economically integrated. And what they found is that the schools that were integrated did better every single time, they were able to actually cut the achievement gap by half in reading and a third in math. And I think the reality of this situation, and we've seen this across a broad spectrum of research, is that having schools that are socio-economically integrated, which in this case certainly means racially integrated, is going to give us better overall outcomes in terms of our school system. We have to equalize not just the public dollars, also the private dollars, and also all those intangibles that come with being wealthy and affluent, and that bring extra things that help students to achieve. And I think if we're not really looking at that, we're only looking at it superficially.
Okay, good. Mr. White.
Yes, so we have this rhetoric in the city where we say that we have school choice, but when there are so many parents that do not have the option of sending their kids confidently to the school down the street from them, we do not have school choice, we have school chance. What we have to do, and there is no way around it, is to have a turnaround plan for every single school in our city, starting with the most underperforming schools. There simply is no alternative for it. But one primary piece of that plan is an elementary question that nobody has addressed, which is student performance measures. Unfortunately, we are still stuck on a measurement of student proficiency, which, as you know, we have a lot of students. If I'm a ninth grade, if I'm a ninth grade teacher, and my students come to my class on the sixth grade level, even if I'm a great teacher and I bring them up two grade levels in a single year, they're still not proficient. But I am a good teacher. So I think we have to be looking much more at student progress, which will help us attract and retain good teachers.
Mr. Jones.
Well, real quickly, you asked a question what's missing, and there's one key thing that's missing. When we had educational reform at the mayoral takeover, we were promised students, we promised overall assessments. The reason we never had that is because there was no comprehensive education plan. The last time we had one in the city, we had a gentleman by the name of Clifford Janey as the head of our schools. For those who don't remember, that was over eight years ago. We can't have accountability, we can't have oversight, because there's no plan in place. What we need is a comprehensive education plan, which will ensure that we have benchmarks and levels to actually assess education. At that point, we can then hold the Chancellor, the Deputy Mayor for Education, and the Superintendent accountable. And what I would like to do, which is laid out in my education plan, is let's mandate that accountability. Let's mandate if they're not meeting those assessment goals, and if they're not holding themselves accountable, they don't get their contracts renewed. Let's tie it into their performance evaluations. If we do it for the teachers, why not do it for the individuals who make all the money, who oversee the teachers? We need real accountability, but it starts with a real plan for education, which we do not have in the city.
Mr. Pitts.
I think on the panel here, I think me and Courtney are the only people here with school-aged children who have real skin in the game. Mine's been one before, my son's four is going to school next year. We've created an adversarial atmosphere. You know, teachers are being, you know, vilified, we put in public schools, as Brian said, against charter schools, and charter schools are designed to be, you know, places for innovation, to help public schools, you know, grow and develop and be better. And we've created a system that we're, you know, it's not student achievement, it's testing achievement. You know, as we look at reform and testing, it shouldn't be about punitive, it should be about how do we fix the problem, and whether or not that school is going to perform better, and students and teachers are going to perform better. And then we look at the issue of, this again, we sometimes look at issues just siloed, you know. You know, education is tied to the economy, and people's money in their pocket, and what they can spend, and housing. We have to look at these issues holistically, because, you know, when kids got to get bused, you know, across the city to another school, you know, and the parents got to figure out how to get to work and how to get my kids to work, that's not a system that's tenable. You know, we need strong neighborhood schools, and we need to create, you know, affordable housing and money in people's pockets so they can move into some school districts that are better, and they can have the ability to make their school, and their school in their neighborhood better as well.
Mr. White.
So I've been doing education policy work for the better part of 15 years. I have worked for the National PTA, the National Education Association, the National Association of Public Charter Schools, the Committee for Education Funding. We can talk all about testing, right? Yeah, testing is, you know, we need to do something about it, we should only teach to the test, yes, yes, tests aren't going anywhere. So what we have to figure out is how we bring schools up. I have a five-year-old, he's right there, he's pretty perfect, you can look, go ahead. He's got a hard face, but he's pretty perfect. I missed you today. And, oh, and here's the reality, I am in this race because of education. I live in Ward Seven, there is one public elementary school where I would feel comfortable sending my son. That is a travesty. I have resources to make different decisions for my kid, I have resources to be able to move him all over this city and a job that is flexible enough to make it happen. I think two things are critically important. One, I think Eugene is absolutely right, that we need to look at figuring out how to create some economic diversity in these schools, but more importantly, we need to look at how to do it in communities, such that we can raise the entire community up. We talk about education and schools as the great solver, and the problem is, there are issues all around the school that we have to attack and attack in a meaningful way. When schools are working, parents get better educated too. When schools are working, kids get great jobs, parents get great jobs.
Mr. Silverman.
I believe in a strong DC public school system. I'm a product of Baltimore City Public Schools, 1 through 12, so I know public schools work. Here, I think education reform doesn't deal with poverty. We've made a decision that we want neighborhood-based schools, and I agree with Eugene, that means that we have affluent kids going to school with affluent kids, and poor kids going to school with poor kids. I do think the Boundary Committee tried to address this issue, and I, and, you know, everything shows that socioeconomic diversity in classrooms works. I also think we need more parent involvement and engagement. Parents don't feel like they're part of DCPS, and that's wrong. We're building new schools, parents are the foundation. I think we need to figure out where the heck we're going with our system. We got half our kids in charters, half our kids in DCPS, we don't know what the plan is. When I'm on the council, I am going to press the Chancellor, and the Deputy Mayor, and the mayor, where are we going? I want to build a strong DCPS system. Charters have a place for innovation, but I want a strong DC public school system that's not going anywhere.
Mr. Hagler, Mr. Hart, you each have 30 seconds if you want it to.
Sure. I mean, one of the things is that there is a separate and unequal school system that operates. And some of that, we don't, I know we don't want to take on charter schools, but charter schools have been really put in place to try to privatize public education. And you just talk to teachers in charter schools who are being laid off every time a school year ends because they're driving wages to the bottom, and they're also penalizing kids because they're looking at the bottom line. That's a real problem, when you've got two separate systems that are operating very differently from one another, and that needs to be brought together and unified somehow and have the same standards and the same principles. And every neighborhood needs to have equal schools that are equally and adequately resourced.
Start.
I absolutely agree with that, and I think that if you look across the city, we still have that major gap. A number of the issues have been touched on here. I think we also need to talk more about our teachers and supporting our teachers across the entire city. When I teach and mentor students at Bluen and Anacostia High Schools, and I've been with those students, I see the strugglers, the struggle, excuse me, the struggles they're facing, and it's clear that we need to provide more services in the classroom, tutoring, wraparound services, better facilities. And I think with that, I think we can achieve progress in the future. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have time for one more question before we take some from the audience. "The District of Columbia clearly lacks full citizenship rights. What approach would you advocate to achieve full citizenship rights for the people of DC?" Mr. Hart, would you lead off?
Sure.
What actions would I take to advocate for full citizenship rights for the District of Columbia?
What approach would you take as an advocate for?
I think ultimately, it has to be a combination of a couple of different approaches. I think, one, let's state the problem first. There's a real travesty that 650,000 residents of the District of Columbia, our nation's capital, the capital of the free world, don't have voting representation in the United States of America. That is crazy and mind-boggling. And I think it starts with good governance here in DC, increasing budget autonomy, increasing our autonomy here within our own district, demonstrating that we have a strong government. It also means advocating Congress very, very actively, and pointing out some of the issues and the fact that we are being walked all over with respect to riders, with respect to them interfering with our own legislation. For example, the legalization of marijuana or our own gun laws. I think the second part of this, though, is that we have to work collaboratively, we have to reach out beyond our borders, we have to reach out to other state legislatures, we have to reach out to other state representatives, and we have to make it their cause too. It can't just be our cause, because this is a constitutional issue, and it's an issue for our country. So we have to garner the support of our fellow citizens across the country in order to eventually achieve this.
Mr. Jones.
Well, I think it starts with a little bit of public discourse. I think it starts with a little bit of a revolution. One of the things we talk about is the lack of ability to do things. Well, you know what, we marched for Ferguson, we marched for Obamacare, we don't march for DC statehood and voting rights and self-determination. The fact of the matter is, if every resident of District of Columbia lopped arms and stood around the White House and the Capitol, not one politician would be able to leave and do their job. This is our city, not their city. Pardon my language, but they didn't get the hell out. I was born here, I was raised here. If they don't want to operate under our rules, then it's time for them to go. We give them our tax money, and then we beg them for the ability to do what we need to do. It's time for some real public discourse. We march for everything else in this city but ourselves. Until we stand up and say, "We're not paying you taxes, we're not going to put out the files that you're governing buildings that you paid for and don't pay taxes on, we're not going to clean your streets at the parks when you have a display on the mall and the park service runs out of money, we're not going to give you our Metropolitan Police Department for your motor case, your international events." Until we stand up and fight for ourselves, they're not going to give a damn about us, and they don't.
Mr. Pitts.
Okay, so I'm going to get real here, you know, I've got 20 years' experience running campaigns, I've worked on voting rights for a long time, you know, Florida, Mississippi, California, Ohio, you know, I've seen people disenfranchising, deny the right to vote across this country, and most particularly here in Washington, you know, DC. If we want to get voting rights, one, first, it's 2020. So all stuff we're talking about is 2020, where reimbursement happens. Second, if we're serious about getting voting rights here, then we need to create, you know, a PAC for ourselves and influence some elections across this country. Because that's the only thing, as Brian talked about, reaching out. To be serious, Brian, that's the only thing they're going to be concerned with if somehow their election is going to be impaired by what the decisions they make here in DC. So if I'm in, when I get in, hopefully, if I can get in office, I'm going to work with DC Vote and interest here in this city to create willpower to affect, you know, sometimes marching the streets and affecting that way, but also, you know, affecting it in the political process. You know, we looked at folks in, you know, Congressman in Kentucky, dealing with our gun laws, I've worked on gun laws nationally and here to reduce gun laws in this city. We looked at, unfortunately, Andy Harrison, his wife's passage, and, you know, the effect on, you know, trying to infect, you know, our policing and our decisions around marijuana. That only happens that we can impact what their decisions are if we impact their safety in their districts and how they feel safe at home. So, I agree with you. Don't make them feel safe here, but don't make them feel safe back at home as well.
Mr. Prier.
Yes, well, I think, you know, these last two got it 100% right. I mean, obviously, we do need to campaign to civil disobedience, that's serious. We do need to build a movement, that's really a 50-state movement. The question is, though, is how you're going to really make statehood resonate to people in the other 50 states as not just some DC-based problem. And what we need to start doing to people who are going and lobbying every single day and putting quite a few of their demands, whether they be economic, social, or political, in the context of a deficit of democracy in the United States, whether it's income inequality or campaign finance reform. So we need to put statehood inside of that same paradigm so that when people go to lobby on these other things, it's not like I have to go on some other day and support DC statehood, but that this is going to be a part of my broader program, my social justice program, my democracy equalizing program, DC statehood, so we can really build a state-by-state movement. And I also want to say, you know, I don't want to just talk about it either, I'm from the Statehood Green Party, and we try to be leaders on things. So I hope everyone will join us on October 1st, and we're going to call for a national statehood call-in day, and we certainly are not partisan about it at all, we want everyone to participate, tell your friends and your family, and every single state, we're also trying to get some international support as well, but we have to start, and we have to start now, and we have to really get statehood, because it's killing us.
Mr. White. Mr. White.
Thank you. The first thing I'm going to do, and I encourage other folks to do the same thing, is to vote for somebody who's worked on the front lines of the statehood issue. I was with Congresswoman Norton and other advocates in 2008 when we got the House Voting Rights Bill passed. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get that through, but this is something I've worked on the front lines of for many years, something I'm very passionate about. But I think we also have to be very realistic in our understanding, I think that the approaches and the recent successes of our delegate, our shadow representatives in DC Vote have taken over the years to really start building strategic alliances around the country, start coming down hard on folks who step on our home rule. That's the first step, to make sure that they know that we are serious about our rights. But that's something that we have to do first, we have to be serious about it. But the other thing that we have to understand and take in responsibility ourselves is understanding that, no, we do not have a monopoly on corruption or bad actors, but we are under a microscope. So the integrity of the people that we elect is so important, so much more important than any other place in this country. That's where it starts and ends.
Mr. Silverman.
Well, first, I'll be happy to join you on October 1st, Eugene, I'll put it in my calendar. I think we have to set a goal. The goal should be statehood. And then I think we have to set a strategy on how to achieve it. But I also think that we have to convince ourselves that we're worthy of statehood, because I think we are. I think we deserve a voice in our, in our House and Senate. And I've not, I don't only talk about this, I've participated with Josh Birch, who some of you know, who's a fierce statehood advocate, and I think we need to convince ourselves first, honestly. One of the things that I suggested to Josh to do was to start our campaign at home, we're focused on convincing everyone else, I think we need to convince ourselves first. And so one of the things I suggested to Josh, as well as, you know, I live on the Hill, I live at Fourth and Gene Northeast, and I go to Results Gym, and before I ran for office and I was in a more regular schedule going to the gym, Al Franken was on my schedule. So we run into some of our congressional representatives all the time, I told Josh, "Why don't we put up signs at places in our city where our congressional members live, let's be honest, to remind them that we want statehood?" So that's something that I've worked with Josh on. But I think also, first, we need to convince our neighbors and friends to take this seriously in our city. I take it seriously, and I think that we need to convince all our neighbors and friends, and then we can set the state-by-state strategy of how to get it passed.
Mr. Silverman.
So I think we've had a goal to get statehood for some time. I think we have had several strategies to move the statehood conversation for some time. I think what we haven't had are the relationships and the people with the know-how to run a campaign to get statehood. I was with three or four members of Congress just a few weeks ago, and we were talking about the fact that Congress has mandated that we have two non-majority party seats on our council, and they said that was not true. Well, they vote in Congress, unlike our own delegate. So the question for me becomes, who has the relationships to talk to members of Congress beyond the members who represent Maryland and Virginia? That is me. For 15 years of my life, I have walked the halls of Congress. As a staffer, as an advocate, as the dirty L-word, I've been a lobbyist too for some of the most important progressive causes around, that all of us are thinking about, gun safety, education, environmental policy issues, and some corporate work as well, all progressively aligned, I have, you know. So what I want you, so what I want us to be thoughtful about is we think about, I think, I think it's absolutely right that we need to think about a path, we need to really work on electing people who share our perspective and point of view, but we need to identify validators beyond the District of Columbia. We know what the problem is. We know we pay high taxes, we know we have no representation. It's a talking point you get in your DC history class in high school. I took it, I know. I went to DC public schools, right? We all know that, we can all run through the strategies, but I think it's critically important that we elect people who can move the dial on statehood. That would be me.
Eric Hagler.
I sued the Clinton administration, I was one of a group that sued the Clinton administration, not over a vote for Congresswoman Eleanor Holmes Norton, but over a full delegation being recognized. We lost that case, but they said something very interesting, and the ruling was that simply Congress could vote it, as we all knew that Congress could vote it and make that change. And I just want to correct some things, when we talk about people not marching, we marched. We marched when Congress brought in a control board and tried to, and took over Washington, DC, and basically rammed a mayor down our throats. We marched, we took over offices on Capitol Hill. We've been out there ever since, we're going to continue to be out there. The issue is, is we got to bow deep enough in our own community to get people to feel passionate enough about statehood, so it's not just simply this layer of activists that are out there, but it's permeating in every neighborhood, in every community, in every civic association, in every, every place that people are talking and demanding statehood, and nobody gives you anything. You can go and beg for it all you want, they're not going to give anything. As Frederick Douglass said, "Power never cedes nothing without a demand." It never did, it never will. We got to take over, demonstrate, do civil disobedience, we got to build a movement to make folks pay attention, and therefore, we win what we win by the power that we amass.
Okay. Before we go on to the questions from the floors, I want to add two things about statehood, in case people in the audience... in case people in the audience don't know it. 1987, Delegate Fauntroy succeeded in getting 101 members of the House to co-sponsor a bill to provide statehood. As of today, I was told tonight, we now have 109 members of the House agreeing to co-sponsor the bill. It's a great accomplishment by Fauntroy. We are on the way, just in that measure. That doesn't mean we're getting statehood tomorrow, there's still a lot to do, but it's a good sign that things are moving. The second thing you need to know is that, for the first time for a long time, there's going to be a hearing on statehood, Monday, 3 o'clock, in the Dirksen Building. I don't, what's the room number?
342.
342. We got to pack that room with people who support statehood, pack the quarters, the backup room, everything. We need to say to the Congress, "The people of the district really want and need statehood, and this is a great opportunity to do it." That, too, is not the end of it, but it's something we can do. Keith, what do you have?
I have a couple that should be really short at the beginning, and then there's a couple.
Okay, all right. We're supposed to be ending this at 9:30. Will anybody complain if we go a few minutes over? We started late. We can't go much over because we've only paid for this place until a certain time. Okay, question. If elected, will the council be your only job? Let me cut through this and say, is there anyone for whom it will not be your only job, and if so, why?
Well, I will, I think according to my chime, I'll chime in. I own two small businesses, so it's kind of hard to dissociate myself with the small businesses that I built in this city, that's created jobs in this city, that's created economic income for my workers to buy things. I just, I, one of my employees just came to me and wanted his last two pay subs, copies of them, because he wants to buy a car. So the guy didn't have a car before, and now he has a car. So I'm going to still be involved with my restaurant and my market with my wife, and hopefully do still good, good things in the neighborhood, and fry some good food, and good times for folks here in the city.
I think it was last week, we heard that the Republican governor, or excuse me, candidate for governor in Illinois is a man of immense wealth, apparently belongs to a private club, $100,000 a year membership fee. I think it's a wine tasting club or a wine club of some sort, you may know about it. Can, I assume that nobody in this pair belongs to any private membership club that has dues that are that high?
Only in my dreams.
If you do, I'd like to talk to you guys another day, so, okay.
If I did, I would organize to open it up for everyone.
Maybe the preparing-for-college club. I'm kidding. That's a $100,000 club, that's right.
Serious question. Will you be voting in favor of the ballot question, legalizing marijuana in DC? Let me start at the other end and work down. Mr. White?
I, I will vote for it, yes, but I will support whatever voters ultimately vote for.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, I will, and I just have to inject one thing here, and it's a key issue that's flown under the whole debate about public health issues, and I'm sure, you know, many people know about this, is that there is a, an unbelievable, real epidemic of this synthetic marijuana, K2, Scooby-Doo, whatever you call it, in a number of communities. It's very, it's hurting our young people unbelievably, and I think that needs to have more attention paid to when we talk about this legalization debate.
I could, as a public health expert, I couldn't agree more, but on the question of legalizing marijuana, I'll be voting yes.
Undecided. Undecided.
Yes, and I would also just like to add that I give the Washington Lawyers Committee and the other organizations that worked on the report that led to the decriminalization of marijuana and really brought light to the fact of how the laws are being disproportionately enforced, really, really got the ball moving for this and did a great service to the city, and I give them credit.
Yes.
Sometimes it seems gentrification is past the point of no return. What do you think can be done to give low-income and communities of color an opportunity to live and thrive in DC? Anybody want to tackle that? We sort of talked around it tonight.
I just want to go first here. Again, we sit down and look at the table. I, I think I can trustfully say that I'm the only one who has actually created jobs in this city. Brick and mortar store creating jobs, brick and mortar store. If I misspoke, then please, folks chime in, I know my brother here will chime in. You know, I'm a small business. We've got to, we bend over backwards as a city administration for big-box developers and large retailers, but we do a poor job, a piss-poor job, in developing small businesses, whether it's here in affluent Ward II, or as Cor, where Courtney lives, over in Seven and Eight and Five. The city needs to be focused on providing resources for small businesses. Small businesses create, you know, are started by entrepreneurs who live mostly in the neighborhoods where their small businesses are at. They care about what happens in those communities, not just what comes in their stores or their doors, and they begat a culture of achievement in those neighborhoods. So I think the biggest thing we can do is, the city needs a small business plan, a small business czar, and how do we create real jobs in the city, in a job growth.
Just to piggyback on one thing Mr. Pitts said, one of the things we don't talk about in the city, DC, everyone's wrong, just read it in the state, one of the things I talk about often is DC is rated 51st in the country as the worst place to do business. The one year that we were not rated 51st, we were rated 50th. That's in the past 20 years. It is a problem.
I can tell you that.
We can't attract businesses who want to engage our residents because businesses don't want to come to our city. Secondly, we talk about workforce development, but we treat it as a joke. One of the things our city did seven years ago was we commissioned Dr. Stephen Phil out of George Mason to come up with a survey of the 50 fastest-growing industries in our city. You know the funny thing about that? DC has not invested one workforce development dollar through the Department of Employment Service ever in a program that's on that list. Nursing is underfunded, and it's a shortage in this city. We have three licensed nursing programs. Our city cut the funding for the only one that they supported last year. They did it again this year. If we're going to talk about workforce development, we're going to talk about bringing up the least among us, we talk about the social safety that's lost, it's time to create a springboard to spring them back into our economy, to spring them back into our society. And as long as we don't invest in the things that can do that, we'll continue to have the same problems.
Voter turnout in midterm elections.
I can't speak to that last question? I'm sorry.
Did others speak to that?
Yeah.
Am I too close to the mic? Is that?
No, no, could others speak to that question?
Could other people still speak?
Did we not finish that?
No.
I don't believe we did.
I think we only got two people to speak to.
I'm sorry. Anybody who hasn't spoken on that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm happy.
All of us.
I mean, obviously, the key is education, jobs, and housing, but I think we need to be really deliberate when we're doing projects like something we spoke about earlier, the soccer stadium. What is going to be the impact on the people who live in public housing right around the soccer stadium? You know, I think we have to think about our projects. If we're going to build a streetcar, we have to think about what is going to be the impact on housing? Is affordable housing going to disappear? Are we going to create jobs? You know, and, and we have to think about the impact on our educational system. You know, I think sometimes we think gentrification is just this thing that just happens. Well, our government is a part of it. Some of the monies that we put in fuel it. And so we need to think as a government more proactively about how we preserve affordable housing when we're building a soccer stadium, you know, how we create, if we're going to do something like that, how we create good jobs, and, you know, how we create an educational system so that people can get those jobs.
So a number of us participated in the RDC Minimum Wage Challenge this past week, and I was one of the folks who did it. Go to my Facebook page and check out the video I did about my experience riding the bus. It took me two and a half hours to get from my home to downtown DC. If I was an hourly employee, I would have most certainly been fired from my job. It was an illuminating experience, right? So here's the issue. We want to talk about how to lift communities, and certainly we can do that through economic development. We've got to bring that east of the river. It's critically important. Government has a responsibility, government has a responsibility, give me 40 more seconds on that, I'm kidding. Government has a responsibility to ensure that development, where development can't happen on its own, that they help to create it, where it can't happen again, they help to create it. We have got to do something about job training and make sure that we're connecting people to employment that actually exists. So the way to do that is to work with the business community to meet their needs and to maybe even pay them to do the training, because DOES isn't getting the job done. And we have got to figure out this transportation conundrum. Watch the video on Facebook.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah, in terms of affordable housing, I helped to found, found the largest neighborhood stabilization organization in the country, called the Neighborhood Assistance Corporation of America, which does home mortgages, gets people in homes who do not have perfect credit that, we built that on private relationships with the bank. So one is that, that, you know, organizations and programs like that should be leveraged in the city to be able to open up access for people to be able to qualify to live in the city and in the community. I think at this table, there's only a couple of us, I remember, that took on the Large Retail Accountability Act to try to make these big boxers pay more what they should pay. And then, as a consequence, we got the minimum wage raised unanimously because every other politician was exposed after the Large Retail Accountability Act. Yes, it's about wages, but we don't need to stop there, we need to go higher and higher and higher until average people can afford to be able to live in Washington DC and not be pushed out. We need to also hold developers accountable. We let them build and build, and we restructure so that they can build more and make more money, when in fact, they need to be setting aside more and more units with the same standard as other units for those who are low-income, truly low-income, so that they can live. That's how you begin to create an integrated community.
Okay. Now, has anyone not spoken on the gentrification issue? Mr. White?
Thank you. One of the biggest reasons I'm running is because I absolutely believe that we do not have to push people out in order for us to grow, and that is one of my fundamental principles. My best example is my father, who's standing right there, was one of the biggest supporters of my campaign, one of the most proud Washingtonians you will ever meet that does not live in DC. And I take that very seriously, and I tell folks all the time, nobody who's seen their family priced out of the city is going to sit back and watch others be priced out of the city. I'm going to create a home for everybody who lives here. I think we understand the elements, it's schools, it's jobs, it's housing, but I think ultimately, we have to put somebody on the council who has the public policy experience to really get something done about these issues.
Mr. Harvey?
Hold on.
Can I start?
No, please.
Who else has not spoken?
I, I did, but I, please, if you want to call him, Mr. Hurst first.
Okay, Mr. White?
Yes. I think one, one very stark statistic is the unemployment rate across the city. And if you look at the overall unemployment rate across the district, it's about 8%, which isn't the worst if you compare it to other jurisdictions in the country. It's still a couple points higher than Virginia or Maryland, but it's not awful. But then if you break that down by ward, and you look at ward, ward seven, for example, it jumps to 11%. And then you look at ward eight, and it jumps to over 17%. And that tells you how big of a gap there is, excuse me, across the entire city, because if the middle is 8%, think about how low it is in the other parts of the city. It's a very complex problem. You can come at it from a lot of angles: affordable housing, education, job training. But if you focus on job training, I think there are three key points. We need a vibrant community college in our city that actually allows workers to transition into full-time positions. We need job training that lines up with the business needs and the future needs of our city. We need to work with businesses in a cooperative way to create that training. We need our agencies to coordinate. And I think the third point is that we do need to streamline our businesses. We do need to make our government more efficient so it's working for the, for its residents and not vice versa.
Another candidate has asked another question.
Anybody else?
I, I did, I, I wanted to speak to that. You know, since the minimum wage issue has been raised, I mean, I want to just put it on the record that the minimum wage in DC is still a poverty wage. I mean, the reality is, is everyone's for a living wage, but no one wants to name a number, and they don't want to name a time period because they don't want to upset people who donate to campaigns. That's just the reality of how it is. The reality in DC is that it would be for a single person, $13 an hour, according to MIT Living Wage Calculator, is a real living wage, which is just the bare minimum, and we don't even come close to that. And these long phase-in periods just mean that the cost of living and what wages actually account for are going to keep going up while the minimum wage doesn't keep pace. I think we need to actually work with the facts, and the facts show, and this is when the Large Retailer Accountability Act went down, there was a study that was done, that study came out a few weeks ago by the Urban Institute, and it said unequivocally that a substantial increase in the minimum wage right away would not have a negative effect on the DC economy. So we have to stop paying attention to anecdotes and start doing our policy with facts, our legislation with facts. I think we need to raise the minimum wage to $15, and I think we need to do it right now.
Okay. I'll ask one more question from the audience. Voter turnout in midterm elections is always low. This is a midterm election, even though I seem like it to you. What can the council do to engage more voters, and how many DC elections have you voted in? That noted, or what?
You know, I'll answer first, actually, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I, I'd be happy to, because it's, it's on the record in the city paper, there's no doubt about it, that in the time I lived here, the only election I voted in is my own primary, and that's why I think I can speak to this issue, because I was one of those disconnected voters. I was someone who was deeply involved in the politics of the District of Columbia, working on a whole range of social justice issues, and when I looked at the council, when I looked at the mayor, it all just seemed like gibberish to me. They weren't doing anything that seemed to meet the actual needs of what people were doing. They were just coming out with these four or five-point, super vague platforms, telling everyone what they wanted to hear at candidate forums like this, and then getting in there and doing exactly whatever they wanted to do. And I think the reality is, if we're going to do it, we have to start to, A, do what we say we're going to do as the council, but B, I think everyone, one quick thing we can do is everyone on this council can make a pledge that when things happen in referendums, that they won't overturn what the voters want to do. You have to show people that you care about what they actually do. And from the point of view of young people, you know, I'm only 28 years old, and the point of people, people my age are the people who are some of the most disconnected from this political system. And if we want to re-engage them, it's not about just saying, "Oh, we need young people," but empowering the leadership of young people and not just telling us we need to wait behind everyone else for our turn.
Mr. Jones?
Point of clarification, first off, I've voted in every election that I've had the opportunity to since I've been 18 years old, including special elections. Point of clarification, Mr. Perry, I agree that they shouldn't have overturned a referendum, but the reason that the council did vote to overturn the referendum is because their general counsel told them that they legally had no, no choice, which is why they did it. So if we're going to speak about that, let's look at the facts behind it. Now, you ask what the council can do to get more folks engaged, they can get the hell out the way. Simple as that. People didn't vote because they didn't like anybody who was running, let's be brutally honest. They didn't vote because there was nobody there to vote for.
Anybody else want to take a shot at this?
Sure, I think.
Robert, and then Mr. Harvey.
Thank you. People, re-engaging voters starts with the council members being present after Election Day. I think that's one of the key things that folks are going to see from me. I'm still going to be walking these streets after Election Day, but it's one of the things that I hear the most. People say, "Are you going to show up after I vote for you?" And the answer is yes, but that is our shared responsibility here, here in this city.
And I, I agree that there is this credibility gap between elected officials, as the public in Washington DC look at these elected officials and basically see that they say one thing and do another. But I think it's, it's important that everybody participate, everybody vote. It's important to vote, period. When you've been engaged in a struggle where you could not vote in places, you realize how precious it is to vote, every opportunity you get to vote. When folks beat you up and jailed you for voting, you know that you have a sacred responsibility to go to the polls. If you don't like who you see, then you need to step out yourself and run and try to make a difference. It's up to us to make a difference, but we can't abdicate and then be hypocritical and turn around and say, vote for us, when we didn't even participate in the voting process ourselves.
I think that is dead on. Every election day at 6:00 AM, my mother calls me, my brother, and my sister to remind us to vote. I'll be honest and say, many times, I'm not even in DC, I'm working on a campaign somewhere else, but I am a regular voter in this city, and I vote because I believe it is my one absolute right and responsibility as an American citizen. It is critically important that we vote, because if we don't like the people sitting up here or sitting on the dais, we, we can't do anything about it. We can't unelect them or get them elected if we don't vote. I, I fully believe that we can't be hypocrites, we've got to encourage people to vote, people who run for council have to vote, they have to participate in the democracy in which they want to have some leadership in. But I think another critical piece is really using government to educate people about why voting is so important and how the issues that impact them every day, how government makes decisions about those things. There is a pothole on 295 that has been there for as long as I can remember. I have literally almost buried my car into it, right? Well, I don't just complain, I work to elect people who I think will do the right thing, and I'm running because I'm tired of falling in that pothole. I'm running because schools are not good enough for my kids. I'm running because I want economic development at a grocery store in Ward 7 and Ward 8, and I want to see Georgia, I mean, Upper Georgia Avenue between Silver Spring and Pettworth develop. That's why I'm running. I have made a commitment to this city. I tell people all the time, I bleed red and white, sorry.
Are we closing? Here. I love your statement, I love your statement. I've lived in DC since 1996, and actually, when you go and register at the Board of Elections to be a candidate, you see your voting record, and I voted in every single election since I've lived here. But I think the bigger, and I don't think it's an exa-- you know, I, I hear Eugene's point that people feel disengaged, because I think a lot of us hear that on the campaign trail, they don't feel a part of our government, and I think on the council, I will work very hard to get voters engaged, because I think accountability is also community accountability. The shenanigans happen down at the Wilson Building because we're not paying attention. So, I can guarantee you that if you're sitting here, I'm going to be asking you to come down to the Wilson Building to testify on exactly the things we're talking about, affordable housing, job training programs, education. I need you, I need you. When you, when I get on the council, I need you. I need you down there to help me control the shenanigans down there. So, please, get engaged, it's important, it's crucial to our government.
I'm going to ask one last question from the floor, one that kind of hits home, having just turned 73 last month. Elder abuse is a national tragedy.
What's a national tragedy?
Elder abuse is a national tragedy. What will you do to protect elderly DC residents from neglect, abuse, and financial exploitation, including guardianship and conservatorship abuse? Who would like to take a crack at that? Mr. Hager, and then, Mr. Pitts.
Let me point out for one thing, there are some bills that are languishing in committees, and V. Alexander's committee right now, that she refuses to bring out for a full vote, that deals with elder abuse, and also in Tommy Wells, and committee that they refuse to bring out. And so, that's, that's part of the issue, is that people do not allow the people to really have a say in terms of vital issues that take place. I mean, one of the things is that lawyers protect the lawyers and conservatorship, and don't want to give up that ability in which to end up being engaged in a dynamic that they can exploit elderly members of our community. My mama just turned 99, she's sick, and so I'm a little preoccupied with her health today. But again, it just shows you that we need to make sure that we take care of our elders who have brought us through, who have paved the way, who have opened doors, and we can and should not go to the end of their life and be exploited and abused by economic systems or government that doesn't care.
Mr. Pitts.
So, I, I think I mentioned this earlier, you know, I'm the guardian of both my parents. My dad had a severe stroke and is in a nursing home, my mom has chronic liver disease. This is something that hits home to me. We have to have accountability and oversight, and, and a serious level, whether that elder parent is in their home and is seeking home care, and, or whether that elder parent is in a nursing home. We do a very poor oversight job in making sure that both elders' parents are either not abused physically, and with the issues that happen, particularly in Ward 7 and 8, where unscrupulous financial par markets tours are taking their homes away for peanuts of a property tax. You know, this is so important, and I think one of the things we need to do is, as children, we need to take more of a personal approach to taking care of our parents. It used to be back in the day that your kids moved into the house with you, that's what happened. I tried to get my parents to move out to Washington DC. They're not going to move to Washington DC, but I get myself back home as much as I can to take care of my parents, both on a financial basis, but also on the legal aspects of their time.
Vanessa.
Well, I'm also trying to convince my parents to move here. I'll assume we should tag team on that. I think there, I think it gets back to my prior answer, we need more community, we need to consider our seniors part of our community, even if they're not related to us. I'm a big fan of the village concept. This, I don't know how familiar you are, but Capitol Hill has one, Dupont has one, Palisades has one. I have a feeling probably it's the more affluent neighborhoods in our city that have them, and the less affluent neighborhoods probably don't. I would support putting district dollars into the, into the villages. This is basically creating infrastructure that, so that people can remain in their homes as seniors. I also want to look at the Office of Aging. I hear from seniors, I've done several meet and greets at senior homes, and they all know what that agency does for them. So, I am going to dig into that agency a lot. I also think we need to put money into senior housing. We need to make sure that our seniors feel like they have a place to live and they're, they're not abused.
I'm going to thank, compliment, and congratulate this panel. I have to say, I was not looking forward to this.
We were.
You've been mannered, but very incisive in comments. It is definitely one of the best I have ever run, and I appreciate very much, and I salute the audience right there. Thank you very much.